So those that are here for that, anybody who's here early for the third public hearing, that will start at the end of this public hearing. So we mentioned to the first group, this is an opportunity to ask questions. This is a public hearing. This is, we're here to hear what you have to say. So we're going to make a short presentation to tell you why we're proposing what we're proposing, what the anticipated cost will be, give you a background on the timeframe of when we'll make a decision. There'll be two formal hearings. Tonight is one public hearing. There'll be another public hearing in April, at which time after that time, we'll decide whether we're going to go ahead or not. So we'll be explaining that, but there's no decision being made here tonight. This is strictly informational. We don't have any final cost. All we have right now are estimates. We want to give you some background, and it's an opportunity for you to ask us questions, give us your opinion. This is being recorded. All our meetings are on YouTube. So any of your neighbors that aren't here, that want to see what we talked about tonight, go on YouTube and see this meeting if you want to go back and double check something. The council is available for comments and questions throughout this process. So I'm Mayor Jeff Pilon. This is Councilmember Joel Greenberg, Councilmember Dan Bryan, City Clerk-Treasurer Lori Strike. This is our city attorney, Bob Rupe, and our city engineer, Shane Nelson. We have two other council members that aren't able to be with us tonight. They both had scheduled things out of the state, Mary Rainville and Linda Blake. But any one of us is available for questions. If you think of something after this, or a neighbor thinks of something, feel free to give us a call, a text, or an email. So we're going to start out with Shane Nelson, our engineer, to give a basic presentation of the project. There'll be some information from Bob Rupe, and then we'll open up for questions. It'll take as long as it needs to to have questions, as you obviously saw from the last meeting. We ran it along, but we want to make sure everybody had their opportunity to speak. Shane?
Thank you. I'll just go through some slides quickly. So we're talking about 189th, 190th Lane, and Dolomite Street are the proposed roads to be improved. So just a little bit of background, now the home maintains 34 miles of paved road, 29 miles of gravel road, and this project length is just shy of a mile. So we have over 60 miles of road to maintain, and this is just one of those miles. We have a lot of roadway needs, and we do not levy enough money to fully fund, fully reconstruction projects. But the city has identified this as a possible project for 2020 and has settled into our capital improvement program. So I dug through some records. Looks like this pavement was originally constructed in 1993, part of the Jasper Street, kind of the overall paving program. So it's 27 years old. Generally, we say that a pavement is designed to last 20 years, so it's kind of lasted its useful life. We expect it to be in the condition it's in, but what we see now is some surface deterioration and then some pattern cracking. There is a rural section, which just means that it uses, or we are providing ditches and culverts for drainage to go further better. So now I just want to talk a little bit about pavement, what it's made out of and how it's maintained. So this is what pavement looks like when it's brand new. Pavement's a composition of rock, sand, and oil. So the rock is what provides the structure, the sand is kind of the filler material, and the oil is what holds it all together, kind of the glue, more or less. You can see in this new pavement, you have the black color, it's a smooth surface, you can't see any of the rocks. But over time, just the natural effects of weathering make a pavement look like this. The surface has grained, which means that we've lost that vitunus from that upper layer. We also see this exposed aggregate, which means as we lost that vitunus, as it turns out, now the sand is, there's nothing holding it together anymore, and that sand becomes loose, and then a little bit larger aggregate. And then over time, you actually can start to have, as soon as we get about half of this, any rock exposed, you start to lose rocks from the surface. So that's, this is kind of just naturally occurring, there's nothing really we can do about it. Also, over time, the cracks develop. This particular location probably started out as a block crack, and now it's what we call elevator cracking, because it makes the pattern of an elevator. But we're concerned about areas that look like this, because all these cracks are conduits for water to get into the aggregate base. So this is kind of a visual of, this will be a pavement when it rains or we have precipitation that allows water to get into the aggregate base. When any material gets supersaturated and becomes unstable, so if we get too much water, that gravel gets soft. Then what happens when we have a void is that pavement deflects, and the pavement can only take so much deflection until it cracks. So in the wintertime, you're going to have the opposite thing happening. If we have a warm day, we have some melting occurring, we can have water that will find a crack, get into the crack, and then it cools down at night, freezes, pushes up. If you ever drive and you have real rough pavement at the cracks, usually it's because of this, because water has got into those cracks and heated them up. Water expands in value by 9% when it's frozen. So MINDOT, or if you back up, every time you go to the pump, you get gas, we pay what's called a gas tax, and most of that gas tax money is used to fund like major highway projects. But they also generate several million dollars per year for research. So MINDOT's done a lot of studying of pavements in Minnesota, and they determined that all of our roads kind of follow this typical pavement deterioration curve. So when a road is brand new, it kind of stays in good or excellent condition for quite a while, and then once you start to develop cracks, and start to have some surface deterioration, it falls fairly rapidly. What's interesting is the first 40% drop in quality happens, takes 75% of the pavement's life to happen. So if you have a 20-year road, you can think of that first 40% drop in quality, it takes 15 years. And then the next 40% drop in quality happens over only 12% of the pavement's life, so just a few years. So this is just kind of a graph of different types of improvements. What we're talking about tonight is a reconstruction of the surface, which is just grinding the vitunus pavement up and repaving. So the proposed project includes reclaiming the existing vitunus, paving new vitunus and two lifts, like the two-inch base layer and an inch and a half workforce layer, matching all driveways, reestablishing the gravel shoulder. We don't have soil borings yet, but as we move forward, we expect to get them, and if we find anything different, you know, this pavement thickness could change, but, and then we haven't heard any complaints about the drainage system, so we're assuming that is adequate. But if anybody has any information otherwise, we'd love to hear that tonight. So if you know of drainage problems, or think that, hey, we should really look at replacing culverts, that's something that we want to hear tonight. So this is just a picture to help you understand what this process would involve. So this is, this reclaim machine has already went through on this pass and reclaimed the vitunus into the gravel. He's going this direction. This is the old vitunus here, and that machine is reclaiming as it goes. So one good thing about this process is we actually increase our aggregate base thickness. So let's say, let's say we started out, we had three inches of pavement on top of eight inches of gravel. Well, now we're going to grind that all up and mix it together, and now we have 11 inches of aggregate base. So right there, we're increasing our subgrade thickness or our subbase, and then we're going to shape that base with a road grader, to pack it with a roller, and then pave our new vitunus. So this is just the first course, or the base course of vitunus. Generally, the construction process is, once we pave the first course, then we come back, we determine, okay, if we raise the road three and a half inches, where do we need to cut this driveway at in order to make a smooth transition? So we'll do a saw cut to create a nice vertical joint, and then the paver, this paver will pull that driveway into the road, the base course. Sometimes we leave a little bit of pavement behind, but that's why we do it with the base course. And then after all the driveways are pulled in, then they will come through, usually it's a couple of weeks later, and they'll pave the second lift of asphalt. That gives us a nice thinner surface, and it gives us our full design strength. So again, you know, this is the typical pavement deterioration curve, and what we're trying to do with this project is give us a new pavement surface again, and try to do more regular maintenance as time goes on. But the town has, or the city has adopted a crack building program. Every other year, they try to crack fill roads as needed. And so we're trying to start fresh and then try to get our roads to actually last longer. So this is what I would call the typical section. Right now, the road width is about 23 feet wide, which gives us 11 and 1/2 foot lanes. We're proposing to keep that same width. The finished road surface would be about three and a half inches higher than it is now. We would shoulder that new road with classified aggregate, and then if needed, we would bring in some topsoil shouldering and kind of shoulder that end slope. So our engineer's estimate for this project is 353,800. At this time, we haven't received bids. These aren't actual contractor bids, they're just based on other projects from last year. We've adjusted them for inflation about 3%. And our estimates are usually pretty low, but they are subject to oil prices and other things that might happen with contractors' workloads. So again, this is the project area in red. The city's policy is to assess all properties that directly benefit the improvements. All those properties are shown with these yellow outlines and then with a white number. Those are the properties proposed to be assessed. The city uses a per-unit assessment method. There are other assessment methods, such as front footage, lot area, et cetera, but in general, the city has found that all houses use the roads about equally. And even if there's, you know, sometimes you can have, let's say, one house with very little traffic and another house with a lot of traffic, but over time, neighborhoods turn over and houses sell, and the opposite could happen. So over time, we feel that all houses use the roads about equally. The city is proposing to pay 50% of the project cost, which would result in an assessment of $6,100 per unit. That amount would be amortized over time. It could be paid off in full if this project were to be completed this year, in 2020. You could choose to pay it off in full by around November 1st or November 15th, that date would come out later. If you pay it off in full, it would not be certified to your property taxes, but if you just did nothing, it would automatically be certified to your property taxes with your first payment being payable in 2021 with your first tax payment, which is usually April or May. So kind of quickly, what this schedule would look like if this project moves forward. We're here tonight at the public improvement hearing. The council's interested in hearing what your comments are about this project tonight. If they decide to move forward, the council would approve plans and specs and authorize going out for bid sometime next month. We would advertise as a three-week statutory advertising period. Likely, we'd open the bids sometime in April. That's the point when we actually have contractor bids. At that point, we'd invite you all back in and say, okay, now we've actually received bids, we know, we have a really good idea of what this project's going to cost. This is kind of the point of no return. Once the council approves the bids and awards the contract, we're locked in. So if that were to happen, construction could start likely in June of this year. This project would probably take five or six weeks to complete, and so we would have a contract provision that required, once they started, they have to complete it within a certain number of days, but we give them the flexibility to complete it anytime during the summer. We get the best prices when we're a little bit flexible, and the contractor can put it in as their workload allows. And then there'd be substantial completion, like generally we use August 31st or whatever lands on that last Friday of August, just so it can be completed before school starts. So we've always asked, well, what are the alternatives? Can we just delay this project for a year or two? If we delay it, you know, we just expect the surface to get a little bit worse, maybe some more potholes to develop, and more than likely, any future repair would be more expensive in the future. So that is the end of my presentation. The attorney normally said a few words, and then if anybody does have any questions or comments, we just ask that you stand up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Robert?
Mr. Mayor, again, my name is Bob Rupe. I'm the city attorney. As Shane, the engineer, mentioned, this is the first of two public hearings that will be part of this project. The first, this is the first called the improvement hearing. This is where you have the ability, once you learn a little bit about the project from Shane's presentation, to ask questions and to give feedback back to the city council before they decide whether they're going to proceed sort of with this project. As Shane mentioned, the point of no return is when the city actually awards a contract to one of these companies to do the work. Before that happens, that'll have to be put out for bid. Once those bids come back and we actually have a firm number, you will receive another formal notice, like you did in the mail today or in the past year, to tell you about this public hearing. You'll get another notice, and that notice will have the actual amount proposed to be assessed. Everything you hear tonight is just estimates. That will actually have that number. Then they'll have another public hearing where you could come in and give feedback to the city council. After that second public hearing is when they will have to decide whether they're actually going to do the project by awarding the contract. And then other than that, Shane and I are here to answer questions and comments that you might have. Mr. Mayor?
So again, this is informational. Feel free to ask questions. If something comes to your mind later, feel free to contact city council on that. We will not be making decisions tonight. We're gathering information. So you will be invited back in in April, once we, if we decide to proceed. History has it, if something goes awry, as Shane had said, a lot of these costs are affected by oil prices. The vitunus is mostly oil, so it greatly affects it. Contractors availability, labor for contractors' availability and competition for other jobs can affect that, could make these numbers significantly different. And at that point, the city may decide not to go ahead. If the numbers stay consistent, and this looks like a good project, then we'll be making that decision later, but you will be having another opportunity to weigh in on that before we make that decision. So again, this is an opportunity. If you haven't signed in, please, before you leave, sign the sheet in the back there. But if you have a comment that you'd like to make, or questions you'd like to ask of anybody up here, please step to the podium, give us your name and your address for our records. Again, it's all on YouTube. We encourage you as a neighborhood to talk amongst neighbors as well.
Hi.
Hello?
My name's Estelle Ralstead. I live on 6746 189th Lane Northwest. And my question for the engineer is, Dolomite is, there's no homes on Dolomite, and I was wondering if we could just turn that back into a gravel road and maintain it like a gravel road in the future, instead of spending, you know, sums of money on a road that is not occupied by a residence? So, and that would save us money, too, as consumers. So what you got?
Yeah, I mean, it's, so sometimes it's hard to maintain a gravel road in between two paved roads, just for maintenance reasons. That's not ideal. That gravel's always going to be pulled up onto the pavement, and they'll have a hard time keeping the pavement surface free of the gravel.
But again, there's no homes there, and I think, I don't know about the other neighbors, but we, other than walking back there, we don't really drive around that horseshoe. You know, you drive to your home and you leave, you know? So it's just, would be a savings to us.
Sure. It's something we could consider, but there are some maintenance challenges with it, so it's, you know, something we'll write down and...
But there are gravel roads I know that do meet tar roads, and they are maintained by the city, you know? So I'm not, I guess I've really, you know, 50, you know, half a dozen to one, you know? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Jody Jorgus. I live at 6841 190th Lane. And there's just a couple of things I wanted to ask the council. First thing, is this considered an improvement or a repair? Or is it the same thing?
Yeah, I mean, it's considered an improvement. It's a road improvement project.
So that's leading into, would, what would that do for the property value? Does that have some effect on the value of the property?
Yes.
By improving it?
Yes. That's the, one of the reasons for doing the project, is it preserves the road, improves the road, but it also, it does improve the property values, and that's determined by assessors. You know, by, property assessors will look at the property. What is your, your house worth, your property worth with the road in its existing condition? What would your house be worth after the road is improved? And that, they call that the benefit test.
In reference to her, her question, there is a road just over here, Jasper. It's a gravel road between 22 and Old Viking Boulevard, and they're both paved. So I know there is some roads out here that do get, do get maintained that way. I have a question, too, in regard to the culverts. I've got, I've got two ditches in my, front of my property, and my driveway bisects it. One's a shorter one, one's a bigger one, and it's a deeper one. And there's a culvert coming across from the neighbor's house. Now, are those culverts supposed to be level or, because whenever there's a lot of rain or serious storms, everything runs into my ditch on my side. So I'm just curious about that, if that's just the way it was designed, or, I mean, I...
Yeah, boy, I really can't speak to that. It's, I think the culverts were installed probably in 1993 or before, and I just wasn't involved back then.
So however they were set up, that's just the way it is.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Name's Paul Dickey. I'm at 6717 189th Lane. My question is, what's the hurry? There is nothing wrong with the road 189th Lane right now. There's not even a pothole on it. If you've got 30 miles of gravel and 30 miles of tar, work on them 30 miles of gravel and leave us alone. The road that's on our downed street right now, 189th Lane, as far as the maintenance goes, who's responsible for the shoulders? Who's responsible for maintaining the shoulder? Anybody?
The shoulder is the...
Because I've got water running down the street every time it rains or the snow melts from the top of the hill by Garnett, all the way down 189th Lane, right into the middle of my driveway. That's where it drains, dead smack in the middle of my driveway. So it's not being really maintained anyway. I don't see the purpose. I don't see why we need to get this done. I'm thinking eventually, maybe after this election, November, we might get some kind of a infrastructure bill passed federally. Do you think maybe there's a possibility we might get a little bit of that, or you think that's going to stay for the interstates, bridges, and that?
That money is typically used for statewide improvement projects.
Okay, okay.
That doesn't filter down to the local level.
Federal is what you're saying.
Federal and major state projects.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, anyway, I'm just thinking, I don't really feel the need to rush. I know there's been an increase in traffic from the cul-de-sac at the end of 189th. That's where the increase in traffic comes from, but otherwise, I don't see the need for a road right now. The one that was laid, I don't have a problem with. It's better than gravel. Let's concentrate on the gravel roads in this area instead. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike McAmory, 6721 190th Lane. Two things are, front of our house is one of the places where the road was dug up last year. Got just the tail end to, I think what you were saying on, they dug that out, put base in. There's a culvert there. Are those culverts going to be replaced? Are they going to be, you know, there's standing water along that in the ditch, does that migrate under the road? Because that seems like it's always heaved in that area in front of our house.
Do you know that one, Shane? Is a culvert under the road?
Yeah, there's one, we're kind of just right on the corner of Dolomite and 190th, so there's two. Goes from our property across, crosses 190th and then crosses Dolomite and feeds into that marsh. So pretty much since they paved that road, that's heaved in front of our house. You know, is it standing water in the ditch that's causing that, or is that going to be addressed or...
That water, standing water could, could cause heaving, particularly at a culvert. So generally, the plan is the, our city maintenance supervisor looks at all the culverts, determines which needs, which culverts need to be replaced, and replaces those ahead of the project.
Okay.
And so those aren't part of, won't be part of this contract, but would be looked at before the road is paved and...
Okay.
Kind of separately.
All right. And I see on your map up there, we got Property 6 and 7, our house is on 7, you're 1 and added a little, so are we going to be charged twice for...
Are both lots buildable?
Probably by acreage wise, no. They're each like an acre and a half, so houses on 1 and the rest...
Yeah, so the city's policy is that they want assessment per property, so if it is a separate property, unless, unless somebody can demonstrate that it's not a buildable lot, or unless it's...
Yeah, 6 and 7. So how would I demonstrate it's not a buildable lot?
So what you don't really do in a case like that, Shane?
If he feels it's not a buildable lot.
But you can't sell, right? You can't build a lot smaller than about three acres, right?
It's only at one point. So you try and do something like that.
Well, it'd be, if it's a lot of record, and if you could construct, say, a septic system, if there's a spot for a house, it would be considered buildable. If there's no way you could construct a septic system on it, then just a simple letter from, say, a septic designer, or maybe a determination by, by our city planner that it's not buildable, not buildable, would do the trick, but...
Yeah. My advice would be to talk to Liz Stockman, the city planner, and have her take a look at that, and just, clearly, the city would be talking to, to her about whether that's a buildable lot under our zoning ordinance. City planner Liz Stockman.
The other, the other option, if it is a buildable lot, but you're not planning on building on it, you can combine it into one, and that, that way you only charge for the one. So we, we see that in some of the bigger projects where people have acreage and they're saying, I want to pay for three PIN numbers, and they combine it. We just need to know that before we get our final numbers. If, if the total number's changing, then, then we redistribute the, the cost.
Is that through the city or through our own account?
Talk to Liz if it's, if it's... You start, you talk to Liz. If it's, if it's a buildable lot and you want to build on it, she can then help you turn it into one lot. If it's not a buildable lot, then all you need is a letter, and then we readjust our estimated prices by one less lot. So... Yes, ma'am?
Judy Schultz, 6812-190th Lane. And I'm also going to talk a little about Dolomite. I'm wondering how many times that's been improved at that end of the street there? I know once for sure, and I think twice. But I'm not sure I've heard anything tonight making me feel like this is going to fix it now, folks. And I'm thinking, doing gravel on there is a good solution. And because I don't feel like our road on 190th needs any repairs. There are no potholes. And I'd say Jasper's in worse shape than, than 189th and 190th. I walk them every day all summer long, and they're fine.
Yeah, obviously, you saw the part down there.
Yes, the end.
On 190th that we did.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
Repair last year.
Had to walk around that, yeah.
And so we will look at, you know, the culvert situation and standing water. We know that we've had, when there's standing water, that is going to impact the, the base there.
But how many times has it been redone? Twice has it been in the twenty-seven years, do you think?
You know, I don't know on Dolomite. I know we did, you know, obviously last year we did the two repairs.
No, once. Yeah.
But...
But anyway, I, it is a very low area, and, and it's very susceptible to blowing up every year. So I'm not sure that that's going to fix the problem. And then we're all paying for it, and it still isn't solving anything. And we have roads that are still good, I think, so.
Yeah, and, and we appreciate, obviously, this is what this hearing's about, you know, and something we hadn't considered about possibly keeping Dolomite as a gravel. Take a look at what that, that means to the rest of it.
Okay.
But obviously, in that corner where Dolomite and 190th, both are giving us heave problems. We need to make sure we've got that. And that's why Shane had mentioned, we're still doing some geotechnical work. We're looking at additional borings to make sure we know what's underneath there. And in, and because you're bringing up, that's one of the things we want to know. If you see drainage issues, we get culvert things that we might have missed, this is the time we want to go back and take a look at that and see what, what serves that best.
And one other comment about the drainage along the sides of the roads. I noticed that too, that all it does is wash out the gravel that gets put in there. And in two big rainstorms, it's all gone. And instead of washing down, you know, through my, the tube in the, in the ditch, it just goes alongside the road and deteriorates that road, you know. And I don't know what the answer is to that, but I've noticed that too, that it just washes it all away after we pay a lot of money to put gravel in there. There goes down the ditch.
Well, I, I think that, you know, if the road project goes forward, we would be taking a look at, at the, the grading on that to make sure that, again, we don't want to just be putting in gravel. Shoulders will wash out over time, but you want to minimize that by making sure that the overall grading is...
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Good, so...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from 189th or 190th?
Hey, guys.
Hello?
I'm Chester Jones. I live at 6933-190th. I kind of have the opinion that Judy and some of the other people have talked about, the rest of the road is in good shape. Jasper, actually, the north end of that is probably in worse shape than most of 190th and 189th. I understand the problem on the end of 190th and Dolomite. It definitely is, you know, busted up, and it needs to be repaired or eliminated or something. But I just feel like the rest of the road, to replace that and not look at the, that's low down there. I don't think it has a good base. It moves a lot. I think it's going to break up if we don't build up the base and do a different, better foundation or some, something there. I feel like it's, the same problem is going to happen down the road. It's not going to handle longevity of the rest of the road by no means. That's kind of just, that's probably most of what I, my opinion.
And that's on Dolomite, or is that on the end of 189th?
Well, the major problem is 190th and Dolomite.
Okay.
Yeah, and I live on 190th and Jasper. So I mean, I do walk around the corner. I know it, and I see it, and it's busted up. It's, it's bad. And my vote, if I had my opinion, I, if I thought the money was to go the right direction, would be to fix the problem on 190th, keep the pavement to go around partially so every resident has pavement, you know. And then maybe the gravel idea is a good idea between there, because to be honest with you, I don't go down there other than I say, I want to just take a different way. It doesn't make any sense. I jump out to Jasper. Most of the other residents do the same thing. I mean, to go down Dolomite is just maybe drive around the block just to see a different scenery. Otherwise, it doesn't have any advantage.
Right.
Well, and if it's gravel, then you can pretend you're out in the country in a gravel road.
Well, it's, it's the most country part of the whole circle, to be honest with you. Because you've got marsh.
It actually is with, with the wetlands in the area back there. It is, it's a nice, nice area there with, and no houses running on it, so.
Yeah, it truly is. The pheasant, my dog, I mean, scares a pheasant out of there right next to the edge of the road. But just to make a long story short, I, you know how low it is. I really, really, there's spots like that you guys know about on, in other places you've seen. I think unless we really did something about building up the foundation, doing something with that area, it's going to be a problem down the road. It's not going to be fixed with just, you know, grinding up the existing asphalt and putting a new three inches, you know, gain in three inches of foundation is going to do it there. There's a lot of movement. And like, like one of the fellows said, it was there, there's a lot of water to scan down there. There's water lots of times in the ditch there in even August. Not even on a wet year like last year, obviously, we had a record year of rainfall. But it's really, that marshhead holds water all year round on this east side of Dolomite. And in the ditch right there in the corner of, we're 190th right there, your property, that holds water in the corner a lot, down, right down there where the culvert goes underneath the road that goes east and west under Dolomite there. So it's...
Okay.
Okay. I would really look hard at that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Debbie Maddies. I live at 6716-190th Lane Northwest. We live right across the street from Montgomery's. That road, I don't know what to say other than the fact that it's been breaking up for the last probably four years. It's been just slowly kind of, it was cracking, then it started coming up, and you could see it kind of going up, okay? And the corner, what you were talking about, about in the swamp area, on the corner of our lot, we have that little slew there. And there's, if it's a dry year, then there's weather till, once the spring is, gets on to summer, it gets dry. The last probably couple of years, it's been pretty wet and a lot of water. That's probably why underneath also is probably degrading it and making it worse. So I guess I don't know what more to say. I'm just saying that as far as their lot, I think, you know, looking at their lot from our house, their second lot, it looks way lower and it's all swamp. But just, see and know, just put that. I guess that's all I was going to say.
All right. Thank you. Other comments or questions?
I mean, is there, do you feel there's a need to rush into this? You just have to get it done this year?
That's, that's what we're having this meeting for. You know, I, I would say until you, you here tonight have brought up the, the potential for leaving that gravel, you know, we have taken other, other roads in town that have had poor bases put in and actually put them back to gravel. You know, we haven't talked about it yet. Obviously, the council hasn't talked, we haven't talked about the engineer. But I think it's, it's worth considering, because you're right, when you take a look at how that road's used. It's always nice to just put everything into blacktop and, and make it easier to maintain. You don't have to bring road grader out there. But when you take a look at the potential for that road ever being used for anything greater than this, it's going to be a lightly used road right up against a wetlands. So I, I think that, that that certainly is worth reevaluating as part of the project and taking a look and saying, you know, what, what do we need to do? And part of this, you've got the equipment out there, and you've got a chance to take a twenty-seven-year-old road and, and make it a good new road.
I can say, I think we can all agree that there is some room for improvements that need to be done, especially on 190th and Dolomite, as far as property values go. I just had my assessment just still continues to, I mean, I just had it done last Saturday. It's mind-boggling how much it went up. So I don't know if this is really going to do any more than what it is. Sure, it'll do a little bit probably, but it's not going to be that much. But I did have a question for the engineer on the dealing part where it was six thousand eight hundred, whatever you come up with. And it was going to be an amortization type deal. And at what type of interest? Why are we looking for an interest rate that is going to be fixed?
It would be a fixed rate. But you will have that in the next notice when I, as I told you, when you get your number, it'll also tell you the interest rate. The interest rate is typically, state law allows the city council to put whatever interest rate they want. There is no guideline. However, the policy of this city has been to follow the bonding laws. When we borrow money as a municipality, state law requires us to have a little bit of a spread in case somebody doesn't pay their property taxes, because we still have to pay the debt back. And they, basically, how they tell us to do that is to have a point and a half to two percentage points over whatever we borrow the money at. So if we borrow the money from the bank at, I'll just, at three percent, we have to charge you the interest under the bonding laws, not the special assessment, but the bonding laws at five percent. And we always, and if, if we get a better deal on the interest, and the interest rates, as Shane said, have been very favorable, very low, then we, even though we might give you an estimate of a, of a certain, once we get our financing and we know what that actually is, if it's, it can't go higher, but it could go lower. And we've always spread that to the benefit of the property owners.
And so with, with the understanding that the state requires a certain amount of protection there, interest rates are extremely low right now. So it's a favorable rate, and it is fixed over the ten years, so. Any other? Yes, ma'am?
At least at any, I'm at 6737-189th Lane. So I'm curious if, like, the businesses in the area pay more for the increased traffic and stuff like that. So, you know, I know you guys said, like, there's so many people, it averages out to be about the same over ten years. But when there's a business that has twenty-five runs on a road a day, why am I paying the same amount, or why are they paying the same amount as me? Is kind of where I'm going with that.
The, the decision we've, we've made out here in doing this citywide, and, and there are a number of interim use permits and conditional use permits throughout the city. There are homes that have significantly more traffic in and out. We have, you know, retired people, and we have, we have families out here with thirteen kids. And so there is a, quite a variety of traffic patterns and, and lot sizes. And right now, it's been our determination to, independent of lot size and independent of extraneous use, because right now, say, a business is fairly active in that. That can change tomorrow, and that could go back to a, a single-family home. So we've, we've determined, good, bad, or otherwise, right now, we're going to equalize it, independent of lot size and independent of traffic volume, because it's very difficult for us to track that with...
Could you put a counter on the road, so every time a car goes over it, it counts to see how much traffic is in that area or in that spot? I mean, that would be a fair...
Yeah, we just, we just have not determined at this point that we're going to vary the, the assessments by that throughout the city, because it's not just in that neighborhood that we have that challenge.
Sure.
And so...
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else on the 189th, 190th lanes? Again, there, there will be, as, as we take a look at our options here, before we do anything else, there'll be another hearing you'll be invited to. If any other questions come up, or you want to ask something, you didn't want to get up here in front of the crowd tonight and ask something, feel free to get ahold of any one of us on the council here. But we will not be moving ahead before we have another public hearing. So, and that will be in the April timeframe. You'll know by then whether we're choosing to go ahead and what options we would be choosing to do and what the potential cost would be. If there's nothing else, thank you very much for coming out on a cold night. Appreciate your participation. If, if you know of neighbors that couldn't be here, the video's on YouTube, and we're available for questions. So thank you very much.